Call our meeting to order, please. Could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Councilmember Hossby to read us in the pledge to the flag.
Shall we pledge?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna roll right into one of these things.
Shall we? All the rolling.
I'm just gonna keep going.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We knew that we'd have a couple of members out this evening. One member's traveling and one member is still recuperating from knee surgery and I think she is anxiously awaiting her trip to the doctor tomorrow.
She just said she missed us.
She missed and she misses us. So with that mentioned, on our attendance, each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly... Oh, we had two meetings that we need to approve. If we could first approve the minutes from the special called council meeting of October the 17th?
Hello. Make a motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
And second. And if there are no corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then also the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of October the 9th.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Excuse me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packet as we do each meeting, if you could indicate if you've received a copy of the latest check register? Thank you. And for public comments tonight, we have no one signed up. You will not be so lucky with the mayor's comments. It's alright. If we could move into the mayor's comments, then just a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that council was updated on. First, we have started paving and milling of streets. I've heard from several different neighborhoods where milling is going on and we know paving has happened up in the North Hamilton and Harmon Court area. So those projects are underway. They've also had a meeting of all of the subcontractors that'll be involved in the Lemons Mill Road widening and repaving to make sure that any technical questions have been answered. They're still working with all of the traffic control measures. Chief Bossy, it turns out the traffic control during this fairly complicated project is a part of the contractor's bid. So they are to provide those services. Kyle was supposed to get a copy of their traffic control plan that we would like to coordinate with you all. We'd like to help their plan work with the emphasis that it's their plan. And that should start work just within the next few days as all that's getting worked Also, we moved forward today with our contract, under our contract with Enterprise Fleet Management. They had worked with the department heads and we actually executed 31 individual leases today, which is just a little over 25% of our fleet. It's in the reins that we wanted to, we tried to take care of some of the more higher mileage vehicles. And Chief, I was delighted to see the police department had a number of vehicles.
I'd say so.
And in fact, you have that, don't you, Stacy? I thought the council would enjoy seeing, we want this, you approved the master agreement, but we want to be fully transparent with you to look at each of the individual leases that we've signed for what departments they were, which vehicles we're replacing, and what the total cost of the first six months of operation will be.
Mayor, I think it's worth noting there are a couple Toyota Howlanders on the list.
Lots of Toyotas.
There you go. A lot of Toyotas.
In fact, we worked with Enterprise. You'll notice that all the vehicles on the sheet are either Fords or Toyotas. And given this particular relationship, we're not restricted to vehicles on the state bid price or vehicles that are necessarily manufactured here. So the police department in particular can move to a sport utility vehicle that gives them more storage space for all of their materials. We, it's important to note, just as you look at the sheet and you look at that number to the bottom right-hand corner of the total cost for the first six months of that program, to put that in contrast for you, we had budgeted $305,000 this year to buy police cruisers along with.
Oh, good.
Big savings.
So, and just so to give you the full picture, because this is a half a year's cost, we have anticipated what the next full lease year will cost us, and that's around $250,000. Again, less than what we had budgeted in this particular budget year for just police cruisers. We think we can begin to see the benefits of this early. Where the, we think the data will come invaluable to us is as we start getting maintenance reports and an annual update on these vehicles so that we can make replacement decisions in a more timely basis. So we have moved forward pretty aggressively with these. You'll see we started, we projected the lease terms to begin in January, assuming a delivery time of what it's normally been. We went ahead and also signed agreements, Chief, with the company that you all use to upfit your vehicles. So all that should be completely seamless from your office perspective. And if any questions on that spreadsheet, Stacy'd be happy to explain them to you at any time. Also, this last week, I just wanted to revisit the topic since a handful of council members had the opportunity to visit the automated single-stream recycling center in Lexington. I think three members were able to do the full tour and David, you were able to join them for at least the discussion portion of it. So that was helpful. Just wanted to use that visit, since it's the next step in our evaluation of recycling, I just wanted to retouch the steps that we had laid out that we would take in evaluating At every time that we've talked about recycling, since I've been back in office and since this council's been here, we have talked about recycling would cost more than simply using the landfill. That's not new information. The city and the county have been subsidizing the existing recycling center for at least 10 years. These economics are not new. Recycling will cost money. And we've been completely upfront with that point ever since we started this conversation. What we're trying to do is learn exactly what it would cost us. When we worked with the consultant to do a full cost of service model so we could understand our cost, and we put in process, we put in place a process that, where we would eliminate the commercial containers, dumpsters from our line of work and take several months to evaluate those savings. That we would begin a relationship with Lexington and use the single-stream process. Our plan said for about eight months so that we can evaluate that and understand our cost. It is going to cost money. We do not know how much money it will cost today. But we are going to continue down the path of finding out what those costs were. As our survey data that our consultants helped us with indicate that our citizens want to recycle, they're willing to pay for recycling, and whatever that cost is will be a full part of our consideration at the right time. Hopefully that matches exactly what we've said over and over and over. Also, I want you to know that we've had, not me so much, but Andrew has had to put up with, not put up with, Andrew has had to answer some reasonable questions about our changes to code enforcement and what the fine schedule is and how it works. And we've kicked those questions around at length here in City Hall and we acknowledge that there will be a couple of tweaks to our ordinance that we would like to bring back to you. We think on balance, it's working well, but there have been a couple of inadvertently large fines for grass mowing that we just want to revisit and make sure that we're doing it correctly. And we think, we'd like to determine what that tweak should be and then bring it back to you. So just in the form of an update, some things are going well, some things we've learned about our ordinance that we need to alter and we'll be about bringing those to you. And that was all of the mayor's comments that I had. Not too bad. Mr. Willhide is here. Bob, I think you'd like to buy some pickup trucks tonight.
Good evening. Just have one item tonight, one big item. It's approval to purchase four pickup trucks through the state price contract from Tim Short Chevrolet in the total amount of $103,587. Our budget includes a line item for these vehicles in the amount of $106,000. And this is funded through our vehicle savings account.
Both of them.
And I've given you all the detailed description.
Second. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you looked at or would it help you any to join into our fleet plan?
They have come and talked to a couple of our department heads and they're supposed to be getting some numbers together, getting back with us, and we'll look at it in our next budget.
They got approached later in the cycle and we were able to utilize the cycle and it fell just outside of what their purchase needs were. So I think to give them a year to kind of track our experience and look at the numbers themselves, I think there's a real strong interest apparently also from Georgetown College, another institution in town that has to maintain a fleet that has to worry about cash flow issues. So. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bob. Item eight on your agenda has a number of things for Mr. Hartley. Item 8A, I have asked that we pass on for tonight's agenda and look at that for a subsequent meeting.
Pass.
It's a complicated issue that I want to make sure I understand well enough to discuss with you in a way that we'd like to. It essentially has to do with an ordinance that the council passed previously, I think a prior council passed previously, that indicated if the state went to a certain centralized collection that we would opt out and impose our own tax. So it's an action that's already been taken by a prior council, but it needs to come to you all for at least your information. Once I understand it better, I'll bring it back to you. We do have a municipal order approving an amendment, approving an amendment to the MOU for Lexus Way streetlights. Basically, the streetlights in the intersection proper will be the states to maintain the lights along the length of Lexus Way in both directions to Champion and Cherry Blossom will be the cities to maintain. In a nutshell.
Yeah. There was, we, you already approved that one time, but they, they had an issue with there not being the right language in there. So they're simply asking us to approve that amendment that they've made. We, the language had said electricity. We will pay for the electricity, but it should have said electricity and maintenance. So if a poll gets knocked down, it's our responsibility. Essentially the change.
I wonder if we don't, really? Did that get to do it?
It'd be dark.
I don't know. We talked about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Talk about that.
Since they get stuck together.
And frankly, we weren't sure of the answer again.
So does the mayor need more time looking through that?
Well, I think we, I think somebody needs to maintain those lights and I think we generally nodded our head to do it. I would hope we could go ahead.
Do we have to maintain the bridge? I know it's a little bit, the bridge was not our responsibility. What was our responsibility? The road?
Everything, everything but the interchange itself.
No, the, the...
Oh, the bridge? You're asking the...
The road maintenance. That's a state road.
Yes, that, sorry.
Lighting is our only responsibility.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So on Lexus Way, we don't have any maintenance responsibility of the road?
We're not responsible for the bridge or the deck, the road.
Or the road going to Cherry Blossom?
Correct.
Because it's all state.
Now, we are, David, trying to begin a conversation with District 7 and the state about extending Lexus Way another country block down to Old Oxford. Depending on how that's funded and how we approach it, that answer could change, but right now it's all state.
Yeah. Okay.
So... I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item HC on your agenda is an item that we and the owners have dealt with for too long and we hope to resolve it tonight. And that would be the municipal order accepting some streets into the Canwood subdivision. Mr. Stilts, you're representing the owner?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'm representing Canwood tonight and here to answer any questions. We've been back and forth on this with planning and zoning. Mr. Krebs is here and I think he finally found a letter where everything had been accepted and done. Letters of credit had been released and even funds had been paid back to Central Bank that posted the letter credit. So I think everything's in order to accept it. We just never, I guess there was a special procedure that you request the dedication and that was overlooked at some point in time. So we're asking for dedication to happen.
Yes, sir. It's from our internal investigation and planning and zoning. Joe's helped us, excuse me, Ben's helped us quite a bit go through the files and look at this. It appears that this is an appropriate street acceptance that should have happened some time ago. And we are using this along with some other examples of an opportunity to update some processes and make sure that things like this don't lag quite as long as they have and that developers have a clear set of rules and expectations to work from and that we will work from those expectations ourselves. I think that's a fair assessment of where we are. But tonight, I think it's appropriate that we accept these streets into our system for maintenance.
Mayor, should they have been done so, I guess in 2012? Is that, was that? I see that's the letter from John Carter anyway.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Mayor, I'd make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for either our planning and zoning staff or Mr. Stilts?
As long as they have the final coat of black top down, I'm pretty good with it.
And in fact, they've done recent maintenance on the road surface itself.
I'm sure Ben and Kyle have confirmed.
If no further questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. Item D and E on your agenda have to do with an executive session and potential action after that executive session. Rather than interrupt the flow of the meeting, thank you all. Rather than interrupt the flow of the meeting, I thought with your permission, I would move the executive session to the end of our meeting with action to follow. So we would go ahead and Stacy, are you ready for the quarterly finance report?
Good evening. As always, I've included your detailed report you can look at. Let me know later if you have any questions. And I have prepared our first quarter revenue report on our major revenues. Unfortunately, sometimes when you're in the first quarter, there's not a whole lot to talk about. So if there is on an account, we will, but I wanted to focus on, because of the timing of when I give these quarterly reports, our June 30 numbers were not complete when I gave the quarterly report in July because of the delayed timing of payments. So I also wanted to touch on where we ended this past fiscal year. So with the payroll tax collections, our first report, as you can see, so far we've gotten numbers for July and August. And you can see that we're about 16% collected of our estimated budget of 11 million, which two months is 16.6% of the year. So we're pretty much right on track at this point in time with what we've budgeted for this year. And compared to last fiscal year, you can see we ended up collecting 11,557,000. So right in line with that and hopefully if our numbers stay the same, then we'll collect a little more than budgeted. And as always, at the bottom, you can see where I've added the monthly incentive numbers. So if you added those on top, you could see what the actual payroll taxes remitted for July and August were.
Tracy's gonna track these incentive payments so you all can watch them the way we see them coming through the revenue commission. They'll probably stay at about that level, but we think they'll be 10 months worth of payments. And then they'll probably cap out at their 2.5 million after 10 months. We're still gonna have the same amount, but we may have two months where we don't have anything.
Yeah. And we had that same thing happen in the 1617 fiscal year, I believe it was March and April. There were a couple of months that didn't show up. Net profits, this is always the tricky one to try to keep up with, but you can at least see, we ended the year, fiscal year 17, with 4.6 million. We budgeted 2.8 million. That includes some tax returns that aren't final yet. So those numbers are always subject to change. I did get a draft copy of the revenue commission audit today. They always have a number called overpayments or refunds due that they owe back to taxpayers. And that number was around 900,000. So this number is going to drop to about 3.7 million for the year once that's booked. The difference is it rolls forward to the next year until we see what the refund amount is at next June, if they actually make those refunds or if those people owe taxes. It's unfortunately kind of that rolling, kicking the refund ball down until we either pay the money back or they have taxes due to cover it. But I did want to let you know that I did get, I didn't go ahead and make the entry because it's not their final audit, but the draft, it was about 900,000 of overpayments. And you can see fiscal year 18, not a lot to talk about yet. We haven't had a whole lot of estimated payments show up yet for the year. So we will see how that is looking next quarter. We should have more information then. Insurance premium taxes, as you can see, there's nothing to talk about yet for this year. Those payments aren't due until October 31st. So everybody usually waits till the 31st to postmark their return. But if you look at fiscal year 2017, this number was not complete at the time I presented in July. So 2.6 million in revenues, we budgeted 2.3. So we actually collected a little bit more than our budget. So that makes me hopeful for this year. We'll see if that was a one-time increase, but obviously the more property you have being built, more premiums being paid. So as long as we continue to grow, that number should grow along with it. Property tax collections, we've collected a little bit of older years taxes. Obviously that will pick up here in the next few months and next quarter this will look quite a bit different. But you can see we've collected 1,640,000 in last year's budget and we budgeted 1,639,000. And the reason we were so on target with that was because we did a budget amendment mid-year. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have been that close. But obviously we came in right on budget with that. And finally, the alcoholic...
Stacy, just to mention again, I was pleased in this last year that we got to do the analysis of property tax collections over a rolling five or six-year period and that. With the systems we have in place over several years, we're achieving 100% or more property tax collections. Viewed in a one-year window, you can get a different number, but when you look at the rolling six-year history, everything gets gathered up and reported accurately.
And then finally, the alcoholic beverage regulatory fees. You can see that we've collected 72,000 so far this year. Again, those returns are not due until October 31st. So those will be coming in. That's what we had collected through to date. But you can see through June 30th, we collected 950,657 and we had budgeted 900,000. So we did beat our budget just a little bit last year. So any questions about those revenue accounts?
So is your message drink up?
[laughing].
Well, who won the prize for the closest estimate on all this?
I'd have to go back and look. Off the top of my head, I don't know, but if that's something you're interested in knowing, I can look.
We need to dig that up.
I still have them. So, thank you all.
Any questions for Stacy?
No, I think, I think it's positive stuff, Mayor. I mean, whenever you can see the trends like we have, I mean, it's good stuff, especially when you look back when Karen was mayor and, you know, how challenging and difficult things were, not because of her, but just because of the economy, obviously.
Right.
Yeah. So it's refreshing. It's heading in the right direction.
Serious. Thank you all. Thanks, Stacy. Let's see. Chief Ward, I think you'd like to apply for a Kentucky Fire Commission grant. What are we gonna buy this time?
Mayor, council, this grant would be for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera. So basically, the way this grant works is they have a maximum of 5,000, their part, so a maximum 5,000 our part, be a 50% match. But depending on what the camera costs, it could be under that as well.
Good.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. So...
And we do have the money in our budget to cover that match.
Sounds good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you all.
Police Department. Chief, this is right in your area of specialty. Contract for internet service?
We need a contract. Internet service.
I love it.
Any help?
Yeah. Where's your sidekick?
He's probably trying to get on internet right now.
I'm like failing now. Yeah, so they got an existing contract with Spectrum right now. It needs to be beefed up and just like we did when we renegotiated... And just like we did when we renegotiated our contract, we upped the bandwidth. So that's essentially what this is doing. A whole lot of data. All the MDTs and all that stuff flows through, and 911, all flows through PD. So they're very data-intensive users. So this is necessary to keep things from bogging down. And it's not a massive increase by any means.
It's increasing speed, is that what it's doing?
Yeah, it'll go from 50 meg to 200. Yeah, which is pretty substantial. And that's not residential service, that's dedicated, as in we're guaranteed that 200.
So even during times of high use, it doesn't do it?
It is variable, right.
There's no one else but them, is there?
Not for that. No, that's been the, kind of the issue is, yeah.
Is that a motion for approval?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Much has been made and seconded to give the police chief some internet service. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, we have a municipal order tonight approving the purchase of stop signs and posts. We talked about this before, but these new reflectivity standards have real teeth.
Yeah.
And Robert, I understand we're looking at 25,000 a year.
Yeah, and the budget, remember, we.
For four years.
Did 25,000 for four years. So we got, what, 900, close to 1,000 signs replaced.
Lot of signs.
Yeah. So what we need is the approval. We sent it out to bid, nobody bid on it. We got quotes, got two local quotes that we've used vendors before. I got two off the internet. This just approval's been up to 20,000 with the one vendor. Because some of the things we buy for everything, boats, nuts, stuff like that. Hopefully, get 250, 270 put up this year. Just go.
Mostly in residential areas, I guess?
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
I mean, the 250 for this year, I mean, do you have an area?
Kyle and Brandon are going to give me an area, and we're going to, that's where we're going to go, is where we're going to start.
What happens if you go into an area where they've got more decorative posts? I mean, I, you know, I can see where they would be upset about taking out their nice decorative posts and putting in.
Well, you know, to put the decorative posts up, it costs a lot more money than what we use.
Have you connected with, like he's saying, because ours, of course, you can't get a hold of our HOA, but our HOA has decorative posts. Because all the neighbors were upset when you put the thing in a roundabout. But if you could get in contact with the HOA and see if they would pay for the post part of it.
I mean, it's five million, I'm not sure, I'd have to use Kyle and Andrew to help with that.
Here's what's going to happen. If we don't do that, Mayor, we're going to get inundated with upset phone calls. And, you know, I mean, that's just part of what we do. But in all, I think there's got to be some level of communication there. And just try to work it out. Maybe they'd be willing to put up some money to.
We're going to have to communicate, because frankly, if they've paid fancier things, they're going to have to pay for them, or they're going to get what every other citizen gets.
Okay, well.
Now, I think we ought to give them a chance to buy nicer if they want to. But I don't feel obligated to buy it for them.
Right, well, I mean, that's just a decision I guess we'll have to make. But a lot of these posts, quite honestly, have like a collar at the bottom. So the post itself sometimes might be able to be pulled out and insert a new post, and then put the collar back at the base? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you know, there's a bunch of different kinds, is the problem.
Yeah.
And I think they all got to be breakaway. Kyle, I'm not real, I know we do the breakaway, that's what we use to insert. Right, and what this, tonight, is a stop sign, 10-foot post, and the inserts. Put an 18-inch insert in, and you put the post in. That's what we're asked for tonight. I think that's, the other problem is, a lot of the subdivisions have different kinds.
They, yeah.
Of decorative posts, you know, you know that. It'd be nice if you go to decorative posts, if you could maybe come to agreement on one kind. I don't know if each HOA would do that.
I don't know.
Well, no, you could do that, not now, not like our subdivision's already there. But for the future subdivisions, you could do that through planning and zoning. It's a certain type or whatever could be done.
It may be that we work with an HOA, and we can provide them the signs, and they can put them on their own post. I feel like we've got an obligation to give current signage.
Yeah.
I don't think we've got an obligation to maintain standards that are beyond what every citizen gets. I think they should have the opportunity to buy it themselves.
Is this not a federal mandate that we have to change these to these reflectivities?
Mm-hmm.
It is, and a lot of the, fortunately, a lot of those decorative signs are not MUTCD standard.
No, they were before the federal mandate came down. Is the federal, is there a real reason behind the federal mandate, or is it money?
We'll get to that, Kyle, about that.
Is there money involved, follow the money trail?
Money that the Federal Highway Authority provides to meet the mandate?
No, that's some reason somebody in Washington said, "We want local government to spend more money."
No, no, it has to do with people living longer and getting older and losing eyesight.
Oh, you're talking about me now, okay.
I'm talking about. I'm talking about myself in 20 years, okay?
Oh, there you go. There I am, Karen. Tom, we're right beside each other.
So what they're doing is they've upped the size of the sign. They've, especially at night, if it doesn't reflect light, it's very hard to see them. You know, when your eyesight isn't as good, and you can't see bright, can't see as well at night. The brighter things are, the better they are. So they have set minimum retroreflectivity levels they have to meet. So we go around and measure that. Most of these signs are actually, the main problem with them is they're not big enough, or they're not mounted high enough.
Yeah, a lot of them are 25, 24 by 30, I think.
24 inches.
So we're going to 30 by 30.
Which is the minimum for streets.
Okay.
You know, Karen, every time these gentlemen go out and put up signs, and I come by to visit the work, my first thought is, why are those signs so high? And they don't, they don't look right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I agree.
But apparently, that's the standard. And I'm not used to it yet, but apparently, that is the legal standard. So I understand that it looks odd. It looks odd to me, too.
Everybody in our neighborhood freaked out the last time that you all came out to our neighborhood. I mean, they all were upset. But they were really, really, like you said, they were really, really super tall, and then there were several of them in one area, so.
I think we should, hopefully, what we can do is go and order the signs. And it sounds like some letters to some homeowners association presidents will be in order, that we're going to start this process. If you'd like to work with us, we'll be glad to consider decorative signs. But they have to meet legal standards and cost. Would that meet?
Yeah, I just think we have to. We're going to get too many upset people if we don't do something. And we've just, we've.
At least ask them.
We get calls all the time, but.
Well, if I may, there are a lot of other cities out there that handle this different ways. But one of the ways that I've noticed that seems to be pretty effective is actually having an ordinance where the HOA would pay for the difference between what we would pay to put it up versus them. They would pick out whatever they want to have, but we would, we would do the install.
That would be affected on your new subdivision coming in, though, wouldn't it? It wouldn't be on the ones already existing.
Right.
No, but it's kind of like what we do streetwise, the extra pay for the extra.
You could, I think you might be able to extend it to new installs, yeah. I think we have an obligation to say to the HOAs or whoever's complaining that there could be liability issues for not installing signs that don't meet code. And if we, the city, are going to be the ones installing that, we have to be especially mindful of that, that standard. And if we say to them, "Look, if you guys want to pay for those and put them in, it's on you," great. But I think the moment this is a city project replacing city signs, that got to meet. That doesn't mean that there's not decorative pieces available to match the right-sized signs. But in all likelihood, is replacing the whole thing in order to make it meet those standards.
You know, the ones that do have to, that are decorative, maybe since we're only doing 25% this year, right? 25% next year? Maybe we give those folks the notice so that they can maybe plan and put it into their budget so that in year two or three or four, those could be brought in under the plan. That way, you're not forcing them to make a decision today, they can budget for it.
We can certainly set up work orders to target the standard sign areas now. Push those off while we're doing it. But the other thing is, it's not just the posts that are the issue, it's also some of the signs. Some of the signs are the wrong colors. There's a standard for the colors of the signs, so, like, street name signs, for example. That's one thing that's supposed to be green and white.
They used to be black and white.
So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, go ahead, for approval for the buy of the posting signs.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
And I do think it, Robert, it does give us a good window of opportunity to at least invite those folks to be in a conversation.
Yeah, we could do it, maybe we want to go to the old neighborhoods first.
It might be a year or two before you get to them, get a chance to look it up.
I mean, this is a four-year project. If you've been through 1,000 times, you budget it, hold it.
Thank you. Let's see, I think that gets us down to the point of the agenda where we would like to go into executive session for, and we're citing, I think, two reasons tonight.
Two reasons, two just two years.
I'm moved to enter into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B and C to discuss the future acquisition of, for sale of real property in matters of proposed pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Dan, we do anticipate action.
I'm really tired of this, it's okay, I'm just gonna sit here and I'll...
It's off the record, huh?
You gonna wake up during this?
And the media that are always here with us. And our clerk. Executive sessions are our clerk's favorite thing.
Favorite thing in the whole world.
She needs to get a cot, take a nap, and have somebody wake her.
Is there a motion to resume regular session?
Motion.
Motion's been made. And seconded. No.
Mark, Mark's seconded.
He's got down there waving his hand.
She's too tired to look up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Of course, there's always no action taken while we are in executive session. And...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to purchase 5.07 acres located at 372 Barclay Lane for $200,000.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Radley? And if there are questions or comments, we'd be glad to take them. If not, we'll just, since we're buying property, why don't we call them?
Mr. Radley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Simes?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we're at the point of the agenda for council comments, and I just happened to look your way, Ms. Cromway.
I'm good.
You're good.
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 Oh, I had visitors here from Indiana and Ohio, and we went to Galvin's, local feed, all that, and they made a comment. They said, "Somebody needs a crosswalk down here."
Tell them, yes, we do.
I did say that, and they said, "Aren't you on city council or something to make that happen?" I said, "Well, I'll take it back to the city council."
To the traffic committee.
Across the area. It was very, very happening down there, so their suggestion was crosswalk.
We think there's some really neat things we can do with paint and other things that the transportation cabinet may fuss about, but we're going to try some of that.
Well, our visitors from out of town would appreciate that.
Okay. Chuck?
No.
Mark?
Got a phone call and a text this afternoon. I think this has been brought up by at least two, maybe three different council members. 508 Hill Street with the garbage truck.
I thought we fixed that, Tom, didn't we?
I did.
Yeah, we did it.
Now, the blacktop might not be fixed yet.
Okay.
That, I know the blacktop's not been repaved.
How recent was this brought up to you?
This afternoon.
And I got it two weeks ago.
And I brought it twice.
Yeah. And Robert and I, I'm sorry, Robert's already gone.
Are they, what, are they specific with their request of what they want? Because all we got was, "We want you to stop running over our driveway," and Robert Bruin tells us, "We've stopped running over their driveway." Is there something else?
I was told two different things today. One was that, that's...
One light.
That's still happening.
Okay.
Then the second part, there's either damage...
Yeah.
To a sidewalk or a part of the driveway.
The blacktop on the driveway, the red one, has been chewed out.
508 Hill Street written here. I go back through them. Written in here three different times.
Yeah.
And when he called me, I'm sure that you had brought it up.
Twice.
At least twice in council, yeah.
Follow up with Robert on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Anything else?
No, sir.
There's nothing else to come for the council? Stand adjourned.
Thanks. Thanks, Dan. And, okay.